Welcome, Councilor Stephen Lambert, in his first meeting of the council following his upping him by election. But welcome, Stephen. Before we get to the agenda proper, I'd like to remind members, please ensure your microphone is switched on for the benefit of the webcast and recording. Thank you. Now I will hand over to the Chief Executive to chair the first item.
Good Chair. Item one, election of Chairman of the Council. Please have nominations for the Chairman of the Council for the municipal year 2022-2023. Thank you. That's the best.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. I would like to propose that Councilor Dale continues in office and thinking for what he's done over the past year.
Do I have a second there? Do I have any other nominations? All those in favour of Councilor Dale, please raise your hand. Any of those against? Abstentions?
Please, is Councilor Dale also abstaining? No, abstaining.
Thank you. Councilor Dale is duly appointed.
Thank you very much. Just a quick word, members. Thank you very much for re-electing me. It is with great pleasure, a great pride, that I hold this position on as Chairman of Brooklyn County Council. And I hope that in the last year, I carried out my duties in a fair-handed manner, and I hope that I'll be able to do so in the next year coming. And thank you for your vote of confidence in me. Thank you. Item two is the election of Vice Chairman of the Council. Please can I have nominations for the Vice Chairman of the Council for the 22-23 municipal year? Yes?
Chair, I appreciate how long you've had. I'd like to pause next day. Councilor Dale for Vice Chair.
Thank you. A second there?
I'd like to say nothing.
Thank you. Have we any other nominations? No. What did you have? Against?
The motion has carried out an apology vote, 90 of us in favour.
Congratulations. Have we any apologies for this evening?
We received apologies from Councilor Holmesley, therefore the council was voted to 25 this evening.
Councilor Hemsley has asked me to read out the following statement on his behalf. I have remained true to my principles and my integrity with the decision I have recently taken to become a non-aligned independent. Over the weekend, I have received overwhelming support from within the local and national community for taking this stand on the position that Rutland is continually left in regarding funding and the exception that leaders need to lead from the front, for example. It is with great sadness, therefore, that I believe I no longer have the continued support of most members. I sincerely hope that you find a solution to get government to listen, and furthermore, I would strongly encourage many of you to listen more closely to our residents as they elected you to represent them. We are here to serve Rutland, not to fight over leadership at this critical time. On this basis, I am stepping down as leader effectively immediately. I will remain as County Councilor while I consider my future. I would also like to make the following announcement. Since the last meeting of the council, I have attended the Lord Lieutenant of Rutland's parish engagement event at Castle and the Queens of Water Enterprise awareness event also at the council. I would also like to take the opportunity to inform members that it is intended to summon a special meeting of council on 27th of June in order to appoint three men of the county. Further details will be sent by governments following the meeting. Two thank yous. Could I firstly thank Oliver for all his work that he put in since 2018? It's not been an easy ride for him, and I'd just like to convey our thanks to him. And also, I'd like to thank last year's High Sheriff, David Wood, for all his service during this recently completed year. He did us proud. He did a lot of work. He went around every village in the county, which is no remaining task, and he represented us very firmly indeed. So I'd like to thank, register our thanks to David, please. Announcements from Head of Paid Services, please.
Thank you, Chair. Two announcements. I'd like to announce the resignation of Ian Rizell as Councilor for Open South. We also have an urgent item related to the election of a new leader, and I recommend that the chairman take this after the declaration of interest.
I'm ruling that this item of urgent business be dealt with after declarations of interest. Declarations of interest. Do we have any declarations of interest this evening? Urgent item. I will now invite Councilor Stevenson to introduce her item and ask for a second.
Thank you very much, Chair. Following Councilor Hemsley's resignation today, I propose that the council should hold a leadership election immediately, and I'll look for a second there.
Members, anybody got anything to say? Councilor Oxley?
Thank you, Chair. A week is a long time in politics. It is a much-used adage, and it's certainly true for where we find ourselves at the moment. This time last week, there were nine Conservatives, seven Independents, and Green Group, four Lib Dems, four together for running, one Labour, and one non-aligned. Tonight, there are seven Independent and Green Group, six Conservatives, five Lib Dems, four together for running, and one Labour, and three non-aligned. And so the Independents and Green Group are the largest group on the council, but no one group has a majority. And tonight, there are only three members in the Cabinet, following the announcement from Councilor Hemsley. So no one group has a majority. Responsibility for bringing all this back on, and even keel, falls to us, the Independents and Green Group. And that point was stressed when I met with the Chief Exec, Mark Andrews, who is our monitoring officer, last week, following the latest round of resignations from the Conservative group. As the leader of the largest group, I've spent the last three days working with my deputy, Rosemary Powell, talking to the other group leaders and relevant officers, trying to get a consensus among all of us as to the best way forward. And it's a challenge which I believe we have risen to. What I'm proposing, therefore, is an alliance cabinet with Councilor Stevenson as the leader, with the rest of the executives made up of the executive members of the county have reached a joint consensus. And so I would like to formally propose that Councilor Stevenson be elected the leader of this council.
Yes, before we do that, though, we have to agree to have the election.
Okay.
Yeah. Has anybody else got anything to say before I go to vote? No? So all in favour of the election for the leader?
Yeah, passing out the chair.
Thank you. So I now invite nominations for leaders of the council. Thank you.
My nomination stands as per my previous statement.
Thank you.
Would you like me to read again?
Yes. Can I have a second there, please? Councilor Payne. Are there any other nominations? Councilor Waller?
I don't wish to make the nomination, but I do wish to make a statement in respect to what Councilor Oxley said.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just give me a couple of minutes, sorry.
I would just like to make it clear for the benefit of those in this room and listening to this meeting, that as leader of the Liberal Democrat group, I was not consulted over the weekend about any future arrangements. I was telephoned and told what had been decided by Councilor Oxley, but in discussion with my group, we felt that whilst we totally acknowledged that Councilor Oxley's group is the largest, and indeed would have expected that group to put forward a candidate for leader, given that they're the largest group, we were not prepared to be told how we would behave by Councilor Oxley. Thank you.
May I come back on that? Yes. Thank you. I did speak to Councilor Waller, as mentioned, and I asked her to get back to me, once she'd spoken to her group, as to what her thoughts were on what I had just told her, and she didn't get back to me. She didn't give me the opportunity to talk. And now, so what she is saying is actually doesn't bear that much basis on reality. I did give her the opportunity to come back to me and talk to me, as she did.
For personal information, Councilor Oxley obviously rang me when I was going to the luncheon engagement. I did explain this. We did not agree that I would get back to him. Had we agreed I would get back to him, I would have done so. I did give him my initial reactions, which in fact were supported by my group.
Have we got any other nominations? No. So Councilors Stevenson's have been nominated. All those in favour?
Sure, sure. Surely we should have some debate over this?
There's no other nominations.
So if I, sorry, Chair, may I speak?
You can speak, yes.
But I nominate somebody that goes to secondary because of the debate.
Do you want to nominate somebody?
I'm disappointed we can't actually comment on what has been a deal that's been done behind closed doors for the weekend by some individuals.
Yeah, you can speak on the proposit.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for allowing me to make these comments. I'll keep my marks very short. I find the proposed cabinet very acceptable as an alliance within this chamber. I think that would be an instance, of course, so I'll leave that. However, I cannot accept that the Conservatives take a role as leader of this particular cabinet. This looks to me, and I suspect despite all the nice words we have here, that in fact the Conservatives are still clinging on to power at all costs, and it's the Conservatives' cabinet under a different name. I would much refer that the largest political group, the Independents, could forward a member, but I understand that Councilor Oxley, for personal reasons, doesn't want to do that. However, I did have conversations with Councilor Stevenson over the weekend, and she made it clear that she wanted a competition. It now appears that that's not meant to be the case, and deals been done behind closed doors of petty conflict, I think this Councilor Waller has indicated. I, therefore, cannot accept Councilor Stevenson in this role, and I'll vote against it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you, Councilor Brown, for being candid as ever. To make it absolutely clear, I felt, I feel, that I have the skills to lead this council with a cabinet that is truly representative of our chamber, the political landscape as it is. Those of you who have worked with me for over a decade will have seen me chair cross-party task and finish groups, you will have seen me chair lots and lots of community groups, and most recently, working as a team, I've set up Rutland Finance Action, where I would say the majority representation is actually from other groups within this council chamber. I would absolutely hope that those groups would know that my party politics are absolutely left at the door. I have represented views, although I don't necessarily support myself, but I represent those because those have the consensus. This is our county council. Every single member, I would love to be proud of our county council, and we can do that together, but unity is absolutely key. This cabinet isn't a Conservative cabinet, it is a cabinet of alliance that represents our current county council. We have a vision, our future Rutland vision, which we now need to push forwards and deliver through our corporate plan. We need to produce our local plan. We can do that with an alliance cabinet and working across chamber. Our county, our vision, our pride in Rutland, I am confident standing to be the leader. If I didn't think that was possible, I most certainly would not have put myself forward or indeed allowed Councilor Oxley to do. Obviously, it is up to the chamber to decide, and I will finish there, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Oxley?
Just a point of information. It's been said several times this evening that the decision has been taken behind closed doors. I've actually been working very closely with all group leaders. In fact, I spoke to Councilor Brown three times today on the telephone, I've spoken to Councilor Waller, I've spoken to Councilor Stevenson. In fact, one time, my telephone, there was three people waiting to talk to me. It has not been done behind closed doors. I've been working very closely with all group leaders, and the group leaders, as I understand it, have been talking to all their group. I've been talking to my group, they've been fully informed of what's been happening. I've got reams and reams and reams of emails, telephone exchanges, and WhatsApp messages. This all kicked off on Thursday. Can I just remind you, after the election, we had three resignations on Thursday. Today is Monday. We've had between Thursday and Monday to reach an agreement, and I believe that all the hard work that Rosemary and I have put in to talking to all the group leaders whose work it is to trickle down to their members and get feedback to me and Rosemary, which I can then feed to everybody else, has worked. And that came over in a message that I put today. So I would strongly urge members to recognise the fact that we have to work together, we have a job to do, and the only way to do that is if we work together together.
Councilor Payne, do you have anything? Councilor Payne?
Thank you, Chair. I've been a councillor since 2019. I was elected as an Independent. I will always be an Independent, I understand my principle. I have been quite horror at some of the things that have been going on here in this council in terms of disagreements and spats across the way. I'm not interested in that, I'm interested in collaboration. We're never going to agree on everything. That is the nature, but we need to work together. I think an alliance cabinet is the best way forward. I'm thinking, who are the people who can step up, who have the skills to do the various jobs, and that's what we should be looking at at the moment. And I believe that Councilor Stevenson, having been Deputy Leader, has the skills to lead, but it will be in an alliance cabinet. And that's what we have to do at this stage to make this work. Councilors, fellow councillors, we have got to make this work. We can't carry on in this position. There's been, obviously, a lot of changes during these three years nationally, things have been posed on us, but also within this council. We cannot continue like this, so I urge that we need to support an alliance cabinet. We've got 10 months until the next election. We need to make it work for the residents of Rutland, and I urge you that this, at the moment, is the way forward, that we need to take this step now, and we need to all support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Harvey, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick remark to Councilor Oxley. Up until 7 o'clock tonight, there was actually four members still in the Cabinet. I can clarify, I was working on the health portfolio, on urgent business this morning. I appreciate my resignation from the Conservative group for the reasons I have given, and it was likely that I was removed from, I stood down from Cabinet, which is, as I said, that was something I knew would happen. I stand by some of my comments. I do hope, as a chamber, that we can begin to work together. I think all of us need to take a long, hard look at ourselves and the way we conduct ourselves. We were elected for the people to run this council, and I can safely say, on reflection, if we look back, I think we all need to have a real think about how we've done for the last three years. We've got 10 months left of our space and of our term, and so far, I don't think that the history of this term will go down very well. Thank you.
Councilor Oxley?
Thank you, Chair. I agree absolutely, we need a rainbow alliance, I think Councilor Waller wants to call it on Cabinet. What concerns me is the public perception and what we don't have going forward. I find it very difficult to support Conservative showing for a resigned Conservative leader in this council. At the risk of upsetting my colleagues on my own side of the chamber, I'm somewhat disappointed in not standing someone against Councilor Stevenson. So if anyone can have a vote and say what they really think, and if that means Councilor Stevenson wins, so be it. And I think it's in the public interest that such a vote is held, and I wish someone would be nominated for this side of the chamber, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Brown.
If I'm not mistaken, people are talking about this alliance cabinet, but I haven't actually had any news mentioned, and I think it's appropriate that is given to all the people and the public before a vote is taken. Just for information purposes, and appreciate that we've got the leader to decide, but presumably there is a cabinet in place that the nominee for this position has already got, otherwise we wouldn't be standing here this evening.
Councilor Payne?
Thank you, Chair. Whatever political persuasion, doesn't matter whether it's Conservative, Independent, it's all done crap, the message we've heard tonight about working together are absolutely key. We have some huge challenges coming up, local plan, we've got the big financial deficit that we need to solve next year, we've got the corporate plan and the future Rutland plan to develop and take forward for our residents. I think it's laudable that Lucy has brought herself up in the firing line to bring together an alliance cabinet, and we will hear who they are, and she's put herself forward, nobody else has stepped forward. She has my support, and I think it's quite brave of her to do that, and I think we should all work together and admire that and support her. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Carden?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to nominate Councilor Oxley. If people accept the nomination, I think people might expect the leader of the life to appear, to at least put himself before the Labour of the council. If people accept that, and somebody would second it, then...
I refuse that nomination. I've been asked that question repeatedly over the weekend. I do not think, I think it would actually do me a serious injury as far as my health is concerned. I do not have the help, I do not have the strength to become the leader, which is why I have refused every time someone has asked. And it's not just Councilor Abbey, sorry, where you go, you see? I'm sorry. I could not do the job to the detriment of...
Yes, Councilor Payne?
Mr. Chair, those of you who are parents know that we have put on this earth in order to embarrass our children. I'll try not to, and quite clearly, most of you are well aware that Lucy is my daughter. Lucy had served on the Cabinet. I can tell you that she kept a Chinese wall between what went on in the Cabinet and what she was prepared to tell me. That is a measure of her integrity. I think tonight, we've heard all this business about things going on behind scenes, my telephone has been hot. Frankly, it doesn't matter. What matters is what is said publicly in this chamber, face to face. I can look round and look at you all in the face, and I will defend my position, and I hope that you feel the same. I'm not interested in backroom things. I accept what both Councilor Oxley and Councilor Dale had said. They were, I think, Her Majesty said, recollections and opinions differ. But, members, we have talked about unity, and I am entirely supportive of the alliance approach, rainbow vote, whatever you like to call it, because we have got 10 months to turn around what has been a dysfunctional council to some extent. It's up to you, members, and obviously I am biased, but you have got somebody who has served in the Cabinet, served as Deputy Leader, served on scrutiny panels, and is well respected in whole. There are others who claim the same thing. We're absolutely fine, but let's stop all this acrimonious debate, and let's get on with what we really need to be doing, which is those major issues which are facing us over the next 10 months. Divolution, levelling up, local plan, health concerns, we've got in a bad place without victory. Chair, I hope that that moves the vote, and I hope you will give the support that the person prepared to put herself forward as leader deserves. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Payne?
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased Councilor Brown said what he said, because I think we do need to know who's going to be on the Cabinet. I rang Councilor Brown some terrible two years ago, for not being open nor transparent enough in what was going on then. I think he's possibly reflecting on that now. I'm pleased to see that. I would like to see the same lesson learnt here now by Cabinet. I would like to know what we are voting for, exactly what we are getting. When Councilor Paul Brown stood in Rushcliffe many, many years ago, about 130, I think, wasn't it? He stood on the principle against Hen Clark, who is also a man of principle, who was voted out of the Conservative Party by a leadership intent on being seen as strong. I don't know whether that's how we see them or not. I would simply counsel the current leadership, the proposed leadership here, not to quite make the same mistake, and reflect on a little bit more shared wisdom within the room, and gauge the feeling of what we've got for it, rather than try to... and gauge a feeling of what we've got for it, rather than try to lead with the strength that we've been lacking for the last two or three years.
I think councillor Carrington, we have to go to the vote first, and then the leader will then nominate a cabinet. So, members, can we have, um... Who wants to...
Oh, I'm right scared.
Oh, no, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I'm absolutely for alliance and unity. But without knowing the makeup of the cabinet, I feel I have no choice but to abstain from this vote. I do not know enough information.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Chair. There's still a lot of talk about infighting and factions tonight, and how that's gone on over the previous couple of years that I've been a councillor, and everyone's going on about how we need to work together. But it seems from the conversation we've had in the last 10 minutes that we're descending into infighting and factions almost immediately again. We need to put our differences behind us and get on with running Rutland with councillor Stevenson and her experience at the helm. Let's just get on with it.
Thank you. Right, members, your councillors' leaders will be proposed to second it as the new leader of the council. All those in favour, please? Eighteen against? You can have against if you want. Five abstentions? Two, two abstentions. So councillor Stevenson is elected, duly elected as leader of this council. And, yeah, we... Yeah, it's a bit early, isn't it? Yeah, go on, go on. Have the Germans five minutes. Let you get your rest and come back. You want to keep going, do you? Item seven, nomination, most occasionally to be the leader of one's to the executive, please.
Um, thank you very much, Chair. Um, thank you very much to those of you who have voted for me. Um, those who couldn't support me, I absolutely understand why, and I would absolutely like to underscore that I don't take it personally. I hope that within three months, you will be happy with the decision that has been taken by this council. I would now like to go ahead and mention my alliance cabinet. I rather like the idea of a rainbow cabinet, actually, because it offers us hope for the future. This cabinet that I'm announcing, the aim is for a balance of continuity and balancing the current political landscape of this council, whilst also asking people to join with me who have considerable experience. So therefore, councillors Oxley, Powell and Waller, councillors Payne and Woolby, I would be very grateful if you could serve on this cabinet. Um, our first meeting is at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. The first job will be to look at the portfolios and check that we are happy as they sit in terms of what comes under each umbrella. But I also want to discuss, please, how we engage with all 27 members. This isn't a six-person council, it's a 27-member chamber. I know that there are things that the previous executive didn't quite get right, we know that. I hope with the new cabinet, we can move forward. So as I said when I responded to councillor Brown, this is our county council, our county council. We have a vision to deliver for our county, and above all, I want everybody to be proud of what we get achieved in the next 10 months. Thank you very much.
Councillor Wall.
Thank you. We've talked a lot about factions in this council chamber. And many of, uh, some of this, I think, has been the factions within the Conservative group, because for some of us, Conservatives included, we are political parties. And so we would expect to oppose, in our case, because we were the smallest party, much of the time, but oppose constructively. And I think everybody in this chamber will acknowledge that we have been constructive in our opposition to things. I have been very uncomfortable with, as councillor Gordon Brown said, the discussions behind those doors. I was particularly uncomfortable being told, um, Sunday, um, the role I was going to have, which isn't in fact what councillor Stevenson was just indicating, it's something different. I did have a number of conversations with councillor Stevenson, but I made it quite clear that as a political party, what I would commit to would be the decision of my group. We have come to the conclusion that not knowing what the portfolios would be, we can't sign up to me going into the cabinet. I did indicate to councillor Stevenson this afternoon that we needed clarity. We, we feel bruised, as many of you do, about what's gone on in this council chamber over the last few years, with the exception, of course, of our new councillor, who hasn't been bruised by it yet. And hopefully won't be. And hopefully like they have been, thank you, councillor Stevenson. We don't want to enter into anything that we are not clear what it is we are entering into. I think it is, I, I totally take what councillor Oxlade-Chamberlain said, that a lot of this was thrust upon us at 10 o'clock on Thursday night. But I think it is very unfortunate that we are not giving ourselves time to pause and reflect on that as a whole council before making decisions about having a son. So with deep regret, I mean, it depends in person or councillor Stevenson, um, I have to decline on that.
Councillor Stevenson.
Um, I have some, um, very disappointment about councillor Waller, because your experience, your knowledge on so many things, not least local government, will be sorely missed. However, councillor Waller, I, I do hope that I will be able to still talk with you, benefit from your support and guidance, because, please rest assured, council, this is a collaborative effort. We are all in this together, and we've got a heck of a lot of talent in this room, even if some of that talent doesn't necessarily support me at the moment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Chair. I think my comments earlier may be of this much use. I fully support an alliance group on the cabinet. I even supported the individuals on the cabinet. I think it was the best selection that we could have with all our assistance taken into account. That was not the issue I was raising earlier in the debate, the previous debate. And I wish the cabinet all the best in the coming weeks and months. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say, as an independent, and, um, having been named in that list, and there's been some discussion about the list at the moment, I'm very honoured, and I would hope that we could work differently and collaboratively as a cabinet and actually make some progress on this. I'm prepared to be flexible and work constructively with all members.
Thank you. Councillor Oxlade-Chamberlain.
Thank you, Chair, yes. Um, as, uh, one of the longest-serving members of this council, I've been on since 2003. Nineteen years I've been a member of this council, and it is a great honour for me to be asked to join Lucy's cabinet. As I said earlier, we've spent many hours, in fact, hours and days discussing this across all political groups, irrespective of what people have said this evening. My thumb, I have osteoarthritis, my thumb is very painful. I'm on painkillers because of my thumb, because I've been holding my phone to my ear. And I've had three phone calls coming, waiting while I've been speaking to the fourth person. That shows you how busy it's been to me trying to get this organised. And what has been a part of it has been my desire to see us get out of this political arguing, political bickering, personalities, cliques. We need no more. We need to go forward. And that's why we had decided this evening to put all our weight... I could have, I could have said, yes, I'll become leader. I could have done, because there's, as, as the leader of the largest group, it's in my if. Instead, I chose to speak to all group leaders to find the best people for the job. The most experienced, those who haven't got full-time jobs. Many people around this chamber have got one and a half jobs, which they're trying to keep under control. And that was the motivation, that's the sole motivation. And I'm deeply hurt that individuals have been trying to accuse me of doing this behind closed doors. I've only done it out of my love for Rutland, which has been my home for 30 years. And I want that to be put plain and straight. And I do not want to be leader. I have been asked repeatedly, and I said I did not want to be leader. And that's all I want to say. And I want us to work together, 10 months. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. We need to do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. So those nominations and, uh, those appointments have been duly noted. Review of the constitution.
Oh, excellent. Um, thank you very much. Um, we have got a review of constitution in front of us. Um, the decision recommendations are outlined, um, I won't read those out. Um, I am mindful that I've only just become leader chair. So what may happen, if there are questions about this, I will, I'm afraid, have to absolutely defer to a person who knows. I am content with these, I know that they have been through the constitution working group, and so therefore I shall move swiftly to asking if there are any questions.
I'll have to have a second or a third. Councillor Oxlade-Chamberlain. Members, members of the, councillor Brown.
Thank you. On page 237, um, public speaking scheme for planning and licensing meetings, just a point of clarification, I'm a bit confused by this. Point four, all running council councillors for the ward, where the status is situated, in brackets, ward member, where the ward member is not in a member of the committee. So does that mean that me as a, a sole ward member in my ward, if I've got a planning issue that I want to speak on, does that exclude me from speaking?
Through you, Chair.
Yes, sir. As a member of the committee, councillor Brown, in that scenario, you are still on the committee, so you are able to make your contributions during the debates on that item when it's before the committee. Does that...
I'm just confused by the word, that's all, it doesn't seem very clear.
Uh, does it, does it, sorry, does it mean that if, if, for example, there's a planning application in the afternoon, I can speak on it as the ward member at the discretion of the chair? Is that what you're saying?
Is it the wording, councillor Brown, is seeking clarification on purely relates to if the ward member is also on the committee already? So the idea is that because the ward member, if the ward member is on the committee, they can make their contributions at the committee debate stage rather than through the speaking scheme?
Right, okay.
Are you happy with that?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Councillor Oxlade-Chamberlain.
Thank you, Chair. It's been brought to my attention, I'm grateful for this, that the language there is not inclusive. I noticed reference to he or she, and I ask that we can change this to allow to be inclusive.
It's between, Chair, the ward group have asked that we have inclusive language. So when I do, do the final edit, that, that will happen. So I picked up some of the, of that language, but we will make sure it's written in an inclusive way.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, it has been proposed in the second ditch. The recommendations are that councillor, one, notes the work of the constitution review working group and thanks its members for reviewing the constitution and proposing the revisions detailed in the report to ensure legal compliance. Two, agrees to adopt the revised contents of part and part one, introduction to the constitution at annex, eh, annex one. Three, agrees to adopt the revised part two articles of annex two. Agrees to adopt revised part three, responsibility for functions at annex three, including the new terms of reference for the constitution commission and the strategic overview and scrutiny committee agreed by a council on the 11th of April 2022. Five, agrees to adopt the updated terms of reference for the health and wellbeing board at annex five to be substituted into part three of the constitution. Agrees to, six, agrees to adopt the revised part four procedure rules at annex four. And seven, agrees to adopt the revised public speaking, speaking for planning and licensing committee at annex six into part five of the constitution. Eight, agrees to remove the following codes from part five and publish elsewhere on the council website for counter fraud strategy, whistleblowing policy, monitoring officer protocol, scrutiny function protocol, and school govern- government protocol. Nine, authorises the monitoring officer to publish a definitive version of the constitution, removing track changes in correct numbering, editing and formatting errors, with a ver- version history, glossary and index together with the public guide to the constitution. All those in favour? Yes, you know, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So now we want to identify the political balance and allocation of seats. Councillor Oxlade-Chamberlain.
So if you tell me what you agree in terms of the inclusion of all councillors or only those in political groups, like I thought we had to say that. It was a possible recommendation, maybe wrong. But that's the next item, councillor Oxlade-Chamberlain.
Political balance and allocation of seats is difficult, very difficult. This is report, number 19, stroke 2022. A tendency to show the political competition with the council following the by-election last week, and recent announcements were circulated earlier today, and copies are available in the chamber. Would the leader like to introduce the report?
Um, thank you very much, Chair. Um, you will see that we have got a table of 26 at the moment with one vacant seat. Um, my understanding is that the group leaders have, um, assigned, who don't like, onto which, um, committee. And my understanding is, Chair, that you will lead elections for chairs, please. Or is that done within the committees?
Through you, Chair. The council needs to decide whether or not to use table A or table B.
Ah, right, thank you very much.
Table A will include the non-alliance members, and table B will not include. So I don't know if you want to do one side.
Yes, I mean, I would move, uh, table A to include the non-alliance, and I would look for a second one. Okay?
Now, we've got a second one. So all in favour of Table A? On the basis of that decision, I will now take recommendations, two to five together. Can I have a proposal? Councillor Stevenson, seconded, councillor Oxley. That.
Can you just explain that to the simple people far into the chamber? What's items two, five, on the far end of the chamber?
So through you, Chair, we're on item nine. The council's voted on recommendation one, that the calculation should include non-aligned members. So Table A in the papers that have been circulated, on your, should be on your table, shows the number of seats allocated to each group rounded, and shows the non-aligned members have eight seats to be allocated, which you've agreed. You're now being asked to vote on recommendation two, to approve the allocation in that order, and then recommendation three, to note the nominations which are set out in Appendix B of your papers. So there are names there, in most of, most, we haven't got, we haven't got all the names from the non-aligned members yet, as yet, but you're being asked to note those nominations, and where we have non-aligned members, make those appointments.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. Thank you. So. So, two, approves the subsequent allocation of seats to political groups as determined by a vote on political balance calculation as set out in Appendix B. Three, notes the political group nominations for membership of the council committees as set out in Appendix B. Approves, four, approves the appointment of non-aligned members to committees as set out in Appendix B. Five, authorises the Strategic Overview and Scrutiny Committee to co-opt five members of educational matters only in accordance with the Constitution and the Local Government Act 2000. All those in favour? Unanimous, Chair. Unanimous, thank you. Thank you, councillors, for that. With regard to the chairs, I will take each committee in turn and will ask for a proposal or second for each nomination. Take a vote on each body and then proceed to the next body. Firstly, the Audit and Risk Committee, can I have a proposal or second for nomination? Councillor Oxley.
For my group, I'd like to have councillor Adam Walters as asked to be considered for that, so.
Seconded. Councillor Brown. Any other nominations? Councillor Brown, G Brown.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to nominate councillor Fox, this position.
Have we got a second? Councillor Baker. Any other nominations? Do either of the nominees want to have a speak? Councillor Fox.
I served on the audit on this committee two years before going on to GIR. Although I have small business background, I have a master's degree in business administration. I'm fully aware of how difficult it can be for those of volunteers to do that. I've had two years' experience in chairing GIR Commission, Scouting Commission. We're in a very difficult situation, our seat has a massive shortfall predicted due to driving costs and lack of funding to set development. This is why our performance is so important. I therefore feel that I will be the right person to chair this committee. Thank you.
Councillor Walters.
I don't think this is a competition on numbers. Always say four years on the red scan, in the first chair, with other years on the council, chairing the commission and everything else. I think it's important that it's someone who is genuinely independent. I think it's important that it's someone who is actually in chairing skills and a better person.
So, all those in favour of councillor Walters, please. Against? All those in favour of councillor Fox? So councillor Walters, the elected chairman of the Audit and Risk Committee. Next is the Fundate Committee, can I have a proposal or second? Councillor Oxley.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to propose councillor Andrew Brown, Chair.
Do I have a second? Councillor A O Gordon Brown.
I would second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other nominations? No. Councillor Brown, you are duly elected, thank you. Next is the Constitution Committee, can I have a proposal or second, please? Councillor Oxley.
I think in the past, it's tradition of being the leader of the council, so I would like to propose councillor Stevenson.
Do I have a second? Councillor Cross. Any other nominations? Duly elected, then councillor Stevenson. Next is the Employment and Appeals Committee, can I have a proposal, please?
I'd like to propose councillor Wallow.
Thank you. Seconded. Have we got any other nominations? So councillor Wallow is duly elected. Next is the Planning and Licensing Committee, can I have a proposal or second? Got proposal first. I'd like to propose councillor Beggy. Have a second? Councillor Fox. Any other nominations?
I'd propose councillor Baines.
Can I have a second? Councillor Cross. All those in favour of councillor Beggy?
On the point of order, I believe that there are two long meetings where I'm allowed to make a speech.
If you'd like to speak, then first.
Thank you very much, Chair. Members, I have tried to chair in what I would call structured informality. In other words, I keep to the rules, but I do want, particularly in this committee, which is not a political one, I give people the opportunity, if they wish to take it, to voice their opinions. And the way that I have chaired, I think in this inclusive approach, for instance, and I will give you two, two recent examples. One, the rules changed over enforcement. Before, we had enforcement coming to the committee, it was a longer on our process, it took a month, because that was the general thing between committees, and ward members quite recently were concerned that on the new arrangements, it would simply be the chairman's decision along with the officers. I made it perfectly clear from the outset that I wanted to keep members informed, and therefore I introduced a post-formal meeting, and I think that has worked, I hope, very well. It is not strictly, I will be in my power not to do that, I chose to try and involve the whole committee. I would also say that I have been criticised, and I'm well aware of it, for chairing overlong meetings, and it is, on the face of it, a perfectly reasonable comment. What I would say, that if a member of the public, particularly, who may well be inexperienced in public speaking, has taken the trouble to come to that meeting and make a case, then I'm not going to stick rigidly to three minutes if that person takes five. There has been, and not on the part of members of the public on the whole, there has been an occasion, a few in the past year, when people have spoken at great length. Members, you have just voted on item seven in that last agenda item, precisely to remove that cumbersome likelihood of overlong meetings. I think we have already addressed that. And again, I have always tried to be sympathetic to ward members who want an item bringing forward where officers might feel that it could be dealt with in a delegated way. And I think that quite, I don't agree every time, but I think members around the table will know that I have tried as hard as possible to do that. I should like to be able to continue, obviously, I wouldn't be standing here if I didn't, and I would ask for your support. Thank you very much indeed, Chair.
Councillor Baines.
Thank you, Chair. I've served on planning for a number of years, and I've taken the role extremely seriously, and I see this as the key to the future of our county. I'll be vice-chair of planning and council, and I'll chair several external organisations as well as within my professional life. Today, more than ever, we're in difficult times for planning, and we need to clearly remember our role. Our role is to make planning judgments based on material considerations. Planning must be carefully managed to ensure we as a county, we can retain control of future planning decisions. However, I do understand the DNA of the county, and those that know me have the county in my heart, which is more than retaining our loyalty, which is very important, but ensuring through careful development for the right houses in the right places, we deliver a future for the whole of the community and for future generations. Those who are lucky enough to live here today are simply custodians, and I want future generations not only enjoy our county, but be able to afford to live and prosper here. It's a fine balance which I am keen to manage. It's important that we debate and make decisions in a professional manner in a very public forum, and it is key, any chair encourages debate and retain control, so decisions are made rationally and not simply on the emotions of the room. Planning is key to our future, and I believe I have energy, skills, and commitment to make a real difference. I hope, as councillor Stevenson eloquently said in her speech, it should not be a political decision, but a pragmatic one on who is best for the role. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
So we'll go back to the vote now. All in favour of councillor Beggy? Well, all in favour of councillor Baines? Thirty. So councillor Baines is re-elected as chairman of planning, thank you. Okay. Lastly, the Strategic Overview and Scrutiny Committee, can I have a proposal or second? Proposal? Councillor Burrows.
I'd like to propose our councillor Wallow.
A second, councillor Encartney. Any other nominations? No. Councillor Wallow, you're duly elected, thank you. Programme of Meetings 22, 23. This is this report number 91, 22. I would like to leave you to speak to the report, please.
And thank you very much, Chair. I mean, it is as is, it is the programme of meetings for 22.
Sorry, councillor.
I'm sure there's an explanation, and I think the way of being covered, the fire authority has not been covered, you see.
Sorry. Councillor Stevenson.
Well, it is as is, you've got a programme of meetings there. I'm happy to take questions, but I can't really imagine there would be any. Oh, yes, I would like to propose programme of meetings, thank you very much.
Have a second? Councillor Oxley. All those in favour? Councillor. Yeah, that's carried, sorry. And eleven, appointments to outside organisations, working groups, and four, this is report number 92, 2022. An update appendix has been circulated, I would like you to leave it to speak to the report.
Yes, Chair, now councillor Fox just mentioned fire authority, which I believe is the one that there may be two nominees for, was my understanding, but the rest were all sorted and could be taken on the outside. I mean, I'm in your hands, Chair, if you want to do fire authority on.
So all the other bodies are uncontested, all in favour?
Oh, I said, sorry.
Sorry, Chair. I just pointed out that we go on. I haven't found forces, Jack.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll come back to it then. We'll do all the others. We'll do all the others first, okay? So all the other bodies, all in favour? This is all the other bodies, not the fire authority or the. Yeah, is that unanimous? So, do you have nominations for the place on the fire authority? Councillor Ainsley, councillor Bill. So councillor Ainsley, councillor Bill, I'll take you in, help a better order.
Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but it's a matter of something rather to procedure. Could we have an explain about proportionality in fire authority, please, before we vote?
Yes, King, Chair, the combined fire authority comprises members from three nominating bodies, and the convention is that the members of the fire authority proportionally represent the political mention of those three authorities altogether. So the clerk is asking for a conservative nomination to ensure that the combined fire authority is politically balanced when you take into account the nominating authorities. They're not insisting on that, but their preference is that it would be a conservative member if at all possible. But if this council wishes to appoint another person, they will then adjust the proportionality and then ask one of the other nominating bodies to change their membership. But that's the advice from the clerk.
Councillor Ainsley, I reckon.
Thank you. That wasn't my strict understanding of what the actual response was. I thought the response was that they were happy to change, as long as we stuck to our guns, from the Conservative until the 15th of June, and then once after that, they're quite happy to change. So I think there's a slight nuance there, isn't there?
Thank you.
That's what they said, that's what the clerk said, in the short term. In the short term, it would be very helpful, but they're not insisting on it. In the short term, it would be helpful.
But it was the fifteenth of June, I think it isn't that long away, it's all. councillor Brown and G Brown.
Chairman, as I asked for a proposal or second at these positions, I would certainly propose councillor Ainsley. And in particular, I would propose that he's not counted until the sixteenth of June on the basis that councillor Bull, who's the current member of fire authority, can go to the AGM, which is happening on that day. I'm sure councillor Bull will stand up and make that comment. And that if possible, if councillor Ainsley is elected this evening, that he is observed at that meeting to ensure continuity. Thank you, Chair.
So, right, we've got the two nominees. councillor Ainsley, if you want to speak on it.
I'll let councillor Bull speak first.
I did say you may only go first.
I'm quite hopeful councillor Bull says his opinion and I'll follow him when we do it. No, I think reasonable. Okay. I think councillor Bull, we've turned this for a considerable amount of time and I think it's time to check, that's really where I'm at. You need to know a little about me. I've been way back in 2002. I believe I was actually involved with the firing strike and actually got trained on the Green Goddesses. So that was an interesting job, particularly hanging back from a ladder. That was just, in any case. I also volunteered for the Red Cross, opened and attended numerous fires, offering family support. Unfortunately, I was actually engaged with officers considerably. Because of this, I'm in a resurgent care, which actually is wonderful in principle, but of course the firemen in particular, it does mean and they can't always leave site as quick as they like because sometimes people have been looked after. So that was the role I played. I also worked closely with the fire services whilst doing justice system. I enjoyed a close relationship whilst sending young friends to fire services such as fake reports, which actually we did actually do across the fire station only a year or so ago, I think it was, with councillor Bull. And then, and also, of course, we sent young people across for fire service experiences. I'm also aware of an initiative that currently is being considered where the fire services are brought under the wing of police and crime commissioner. And one last point, I could save them a considerable amount of money in costumes because I could immediately double up as Father Christmas when they do their children's presentations. Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you, Chairman. And I think I should just first of all apologise to you, Chairman, and the monitoring officer. I think I was probably on autopilot. I think we called in my days the actual programme was taken last, but that's my excuse. So the combined fire authority, amendments, indeed. You have elected me for the last three years of this term to represent the county on the combined fire authority and for some years before. Now, as we've heard in the monitoring officer stealing my thunder a little, and I don't mind that, the CFA is comprised of a committee of seventeen councillors from Lescar City, Leicestershire and Rutland with the political groups of Liberal, Labour and Conservative representatives. So I am the only member representing Rutland. Now, I have been honoured to be elected by the various political groups within the CFA to be chairman of both the governance committee, which handles finance, budgets and elements of scrutiny, and also the employment committee. These are two of the four committees that they have. I also sit on the main CFA committee, the exception being the pensions committee. This has enabled me to build up a very strong working relationship with all the parties to deliver for Rutland. So what do I mean by that? And I'll give you just a few examples. I have been able to influence the decision that the Oakham Station remains active twenty-four-seven for fifty-two weeks of the year to protect residents, despite being one of the quietest stations of the twenty. We are regularly in the bottom three. Other quiet stations are not manned at night. They run by being pulled out. Because, as I term it, we are akin to an outpost of what would have been the Roman Empire. And you will understand that when you look at the map of the CFA in Rutland. I have been able to gain agreement that we can man our fire engines with five fighters as opposed to four. Other stations, they have four. It's basically because of our rurality. And our nearest support is actually Lincolnshire. So in addition, because of our rurality, I've been able to secure the allocation of one of the new rapid response vehicles, which can operate with as few as two firefighters. And when we did an analysis of the Uppingham Station in particular, it would have covered fifty-five percent of all the calls. So you will know there's a great more activity, councillor Oxley, and the Uppingham members out of Uppingham. I also work very closely with the cadets of the fire service because they are the future. As shown recently, and I was joined by councillor Stevenson in a four-day engagement in the Uppingham Station, where I was asked at the end to present prizes. And you will be aware that I have organised various visits to the Oakham and Uppingham Stations and also organised equipment delays in this company. There is much more than I could tell you, but I am limited by time. What I will say is that I have vast experience and can utilise all the knowledge that I have to secure the best services for Rutland. I hope I can count on your support to represent this county for a further year, members. Thank you.
So, members, we'll go to the vote. All in favour of councillor Ainsley? Seven, all in favour of councillor Bull? Seventeen, so councillor Bull is elected as our representative on fire authority. We can see now for the...
I've just been notified that the appointment of the Armed Forces Champion Positions Leader's Choice. Obviously, I'm not going to make that now because I'd be interested to hear from members. We know that that covenant is something that we are very proud of in Rutland. It's a prestigious and very, very creative position. So I'd be pleased to hear from any members who would be interested in that. And of course, not having enough knowledge isn't a reason not to be interested in it. And I'm sure you could source a decent brief and that sort of thing. Thank you.
So, we have no urgent business, Mr Chair. I have a piece of urgent business, but it is privately personal and it is to do with an officer who will be shortly leaving. May I stand?
You can indeed.
Members, I think we can all agree that we have been served exceptionally well by Marie Rosenthal. She has come into our little county and most diligently looked after us and tweaked our constitution. And she's tweaked me once or twice. And I will greatly miss such tweaks. But seriously, Marie, from the bottom of my heart, I would like to thank you for your cheerful countenance, for your enthusiasm, for your determination, actually, to get things done your way. And really, I'm going to leave it there, Mr Chair. And I think, I hope everybody around here appreciates what Marie has done. We're going to miss you. But apparently, I did have a little word before we started because I don't like to get things too wrong. And you are with us for a few more weeks. And enjoy your little sojourn with us. And I look forward to seeing you in the future. Thank you, sir.
And I also have my own personal thank you and keeping me in order. Thank you. Members, just before we finish, we've had a difficult meeting tonight. And I just hope that we can all now get together and get on and serve for us in the best way that we can possibly do. And forget what's gone in the past and let's carry on for the future of Rutland. Other than that, I'll declare the meeting closed.